Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks, the proud home of the University of North Dakota. This is the time and place for the city's jobs development authority meeting. We'll begin with roll call, please.
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Govami.
Here.
Sandy. Vean.
Here.
Mayor Paczynski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. We'll start with item 2.1, Flexpace Loan Requests on SunDog Mining. Mr. Hatch, good evening.
Thank you Chairman Weber, Weber, Mayor Paczynski, members of the Jobs Development Authority, Kevin Hatcher, Business Development Manager from the Grand Forks Regional Economic Development Corporation, speaking on the request for 107-692 for the Flexpace subsidy. We're fortunate to also have in attendance Mr. Aaron Hall, the CEO and founder of Bifrost Manufacturing and SunDog Mining. So the structure of this loan, a little bit of background, SunDog Mining, they're operating as the holding company for Bifrost Manufacturing, and you may have some familiarity with Bifrost Manufacturing from their EDA revolving loan fund and PACE request back in December of '23 for the purchase of their 3D equipment material during that time span. Their mission, just a little bit of background again, the mission is to bridge the gap within the manufacturing industry, producing high-quality, cost-effective, and efficient 3D printed parts. They're currently located in a 1213 Ryland Road at the very south end of Grand Forks, and then they're instantly generating revenues through the not only local funds with a lot of the manufacturing industries in the city of Grand Forks, but even out-of-state funds generating that primary sector mission here in Grand Forks. Some of the services include carbon manufacturing, custom manufacturing, the carbon fiber or steel parts, welding and fabrication, CAD design, and 3D scanning and CNC machining. For this particular project, Bifrost Manufacturing, they're looking to expand into an additional facility at the former Atrix building located at 2100 Library Circle, and this new space is going to be utilized as a clean space for their designing and administrative services along with the clean manufacturing portion of their business. The project includes the purchase of roughly $14,000 square foot facility, and then the company currently has 19 employees with plans in the next 24 months to increase to 31 total employees. So the total project, we're looking at $1.2 million. We're looking to utilize a Flexpace to reduce the interest rate from that estimated 7.37% from Gate City Bank to 3.5%, and that's on a $960,000 note. As you can see in the application, they're going to be contributing an equity portion of $240,000 for this project, and then the loan request, as I mentioned, was 107-692, which would leverage Bank of North Dakota's grant portion of $200,000. We're looking at the structure of a deferral period of 106 months, followed by its 12 monthly equal installments on the note locally here. The security, it's through secondary mortgage on the property being purchased from the company along with personal guarantees from the owner's, Mr. Hall, and also Zachary Keenan, also founder of the company. And we're looking at the loan-to-value of, from the Grand Forks loans of 88.97%.
Thank you, Mr. Hatcher. And I'll open the public hearing on this matter. Does anyone wish to speak to item 2.1? Does anyone wish to speak to item 2.1? We'll close the public hearing. Any questions for Mr. Hatcher? Ms. Osowski, please.
I move approval.
We have a motion, second from Ms. Lunskey. Any further questions or comments? Hearing nothing, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 2.2, Hive Lease Metal Arc Aircraft, Mr. Conlon.
Thank you Chairman Weber, members of the authority. Here tonight with the first of what we hope is a couple lease requests over at the Hive. The second floor fit-up project of just about 6,300 square feet over there is about complete. Contractors are working through some kind of finishing touches, final items, and then partition walls have been ordered, looking around to June install, so that's all good. We've got, like I said, the first lease request here tonight from Metal Arc Aircraft for the, I guess it'd be the southeast corner of the second floor, the original former Thread space. Other leasable spaces on the second floor include those partition walls that are on order. This one does not fortunately, so Metal Arc's anxious to get in there. We're anxious to certainly get them in there, start receiving some lease rent or revenues. The rate that we're looking at for this lease is at that $20 a square foot, which is right where we were hoping to be when we launched this project. That rate was deemed reasonable by the city assessor at that time and certainly is as well now. At that 1,280 square feet, that's about, or that amounts to $25,600 a year, just over $2,100 a month. We'll also charge the $150 a person membership fee, sort of in lieu of CAM, which is standard over at the Hive. So for the four initial members, that's going to be about $7,200 per year as well. With that number, obviously hoped and anticipated to grow over the five-year term. We're suggesting that five-year term at annual 3% increase without a unilateral renewal option. Happy to stand for any questions. I know Johnny Ryan here is here as well for any questions he might have.
Thank you, Mr. Conlon. I'll open a public hearing on item 2.2. Does anyone wish to speak to this item? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions for Mr. Conlon? Mr. President Sandy, please.
Just as a matter of procedure, are we going to have to approve every single lease that they're doing at the Hive if it's a standard lease? Why does it have to come to city council?
It would, I can't remember if, under the terms of the, I thought we put in some provisions that they were allowed to, management of the Hive would be able to enter into these agreements because we had the standard form agreement.
That's what I thought.
We had some provisions in there about that. I could be wrong on that, President Sandy.
If the, if the terms are different, or if there's something abnormal, I can see why we'd want to bring it to council, but I personally don't see why we're making decisions about these leases.
If I could, so the membership agreement, that $150 a month, that's the part that is standardized and for members that aren't kind of taking exclusive ownership or right, I guess, over a certain space. We do have that set up, as Mr. Gostad referred to. For the leases, to your point, you know, this one is what we hope it becomes the standard, but you know, it's, I know in the past, for instance, with Thread, we brought that forward, and there were some negotiations as to some in-kind support to go toward, as, to qualify as a portion of their rent. So that came forward, you know, certainly a similar request we would bring back forward. That, I think, is the delineation, is the membership piece has been standardized, the lease, with that variability, I was to bring it to you this way.
If I could interject, I think to the extent that you approve a standardized lease, and that's, that's being utilized, and there aren't any deviations from that standardized lease, then I think you could approve that standardized lease and authorize the Hive management to enter into those type of contracts that have the same terms. But to the extent that there is a deviation, then I, then you're going to have to bring it back.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Gostad. I think we should, just again procedurally, I think we should come up with a standardized lease that we can approve at some point in the near future. Otherwise, I'll move approval. Thank you.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions?
Just one question.
Please, Mr. Conlon.
If this is, if these terms are agreeable, meet that standardization, we certainly can, can move forward with that, understanding from, from tonight. I guess I should defer to Mr. Gostad to confirm that, but from a staff perspective, we'd be fine with that.
You want to add that as an amendment to your question?
Well, I would just think that Mr. Gostad will bring, should bring a lease agreement to us in the near future, if it's this one, or if he thinks that perhaps there should be some changes to make it whatever he thinks should be standard. I would think that that would be appropriate.
I'd appreciate that, that I could bring together the document, and you can look at it without names, and just, that'd be the standardized lease going forward.
Yep.
Very good. So we have a motion just referring to item 2.2, then. Mayor.
Yep. I just want to welcome Metal Arc. They've been in the building for a while. I think we're pretty excited. They're also looking at doing manufacturing, which is always very exciting. So happy to have them here long-term, and looking at this with the membership fees, you're looking at like $25, almost $26 a square foot. So I think that's a pretty good rental rate, so just happy to support them.
If there's no further questions or comments, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Conlon, item 2.3, Past Due Loans, Amy's Place and Mobile Recon Writeoffs.
Yes. So you'll recall, both Mobile Recon Systems had a, we call it the legacy EDA RLF loan with outstanding balance of roughly $350,000. Amy's Place was a startup Grand Forks loan that had roughly $31,000 in default or past due debt. We've worked with Mr. Gostad's office on both of those loans for different reasons. We've exhausted essentially all of our options to regain any, any of those assets, or any of those funds, rather, through the recovery process or collections process. From our perspective as staff, and from finances' perspective, it doesn't make a ton of sense to continue to carry those on the books as receivables when we don't really have a realistic chance of collecting on them. So just to clean up our books, we want to make sure that they're reflected the way reality is, I guess, is that write them off as uncollectible or consider them uncollectible. A quick distinction is just that Mobile Recon's gone through the formal bankruptcy process, I believe, both personally and the company. So the personal guarantees have been discharged through that process, and as I understand, Mr. Gostad might wish to add more details on this, but the assets that we've been made aware of for the corporation are certainly insufficient to pay back superior debtors and certainly not us. For the Amy's Place one, we'd write it off as uncollectible. The entity no longer exists or is active, so there's not an entity to pursue collections from at this time. Should, for any reason, that entity become, you know, functional again and resume business, this debt would remain due and owing. Don't anticipate that happening, but just a quick distinction between those two. Happy to stand for any questions or if Mr. Gostad was...
Thank you. And Mr. Gostad, did you wish to add anything to item 2.3?
Yeah, one point of clarification, the Mobile Recon officers and shareholders that we had personal guarantees, they did file the Chapter 7, and their debt obligations are discharged, which means their guarantees are discharged, so we can't seek collection against them. And the only thing that was remaining were personal property and security interest, and we were in a second position behind Choice, and Choice has got, it looks like it's over $400,000, $450,000 worth of debt. I've had communications with the attorney for Choice Financial and reviewed some of the personal property, and it looks like the value is around $20,000 is what they're estimating. So it won't even come close to taking care of Choice, let alone getting to us at any point. So you're kind of throwing good money after bad by continuing pursuing this. And it's the same analysis with Amy's Places. There's just, there's really no assets to try to recover from at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Gostad. And with that, I'll open the public hearing on item 2.3. Does anyone wish to speak to this item? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions or comments from Mr. Conlon or Mr. Gostad? Mayor.
Mr. Conlon, just a refresher, EDA RLF, that's Economic Development Association Revolving Loan Funds, is that correct?
Yeah, Economic Development Administration, yeah, revolving loan funds. So the reason I mentioned the legacy EDA RLF is we had one stemming from flood recovery dollars. That's what pool these funds were from. The C-Ron, or that has kind of converted to our new EDA RLF program, that's a separate pot of funds from these.
Okay, so on these funds, if they're, I'm just trying to get, you know, this was federal funds, these weren't local funds, but they were federal funds. If they rolled over at this time, were they going to continue to be EDA revolving loan funds, or would we have strings attached if they had rolled over and came into the repayment?
So these, these funds were de-federalized, I think it was four years ago, around 2020, 2021 about. So at that time, these funds were de-federalized. They would have revolved to us as, as just cash on hand to the JDA, so without those federal strings attached, unfortunately. So yeah, that's the distinction between the two.
So it stings a little bit more.
It does.
Okay.
It does.
Thanks.
Further questions or comments, looking, otherwise looking for a motion? We have a motion to approve from Ms. Osowski, second from Mr. Vean. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Ms. Osowski moves. President Sandy seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, adjourned. Thanks.
All right, moving right along. We will call to order the Grand Forks City Council meeting for Monday, May 6, 5:30 PM. Roll call, please. Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Sowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Govami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Vean.
Here.
All present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. First, just want to highlight, we did have a couple people attend the AU VSI conference. Definitely very positive, UND had a big presence down there. Hopefully, there'll be some contacts and some more businesses coming up this way, but the Hive was represented well, and the university was represented very well with an event at the Midway as well. So Grand Forks really took over that event, which was pretty exciting to see because I think it's the largest UAS-related conference, at least in the US, maybe the world. Just last week, we did have a two-day trip out to Boise to meet the JR Simplot headquarters. Really, I think we all left there very positive. We got to tell the story of what's happening in Grand Forks, talked about their future investment. They left really impressed with the momentum and what's happening in the city, and wanted to be a part of that, not only from the business side, but from a quality of life side. So there'll be ongoing discussions on that, but, but very exciting. We got, we just passed electronics cleanup. That was over the weekend. The event was well received, so I'd imagine there was quite a few cassette tape players, maybe even some of your eight-tracks, Mr. Gostad, were in there. Let's see, we've got spring cleanup coming up, starts May 13. This will be picked up on Street Maintenance Day, so get items out by 7:00 AM. There'll be no alley pickup, so keep, keep glass separate so that we don't get all that broken as that big claw machine comes by. And then largely, just keep it away. If you, if you got a mailbox or a new bike or a snowmobile, don't put that right next to the pile because that would be confusing. Otherwise, it's a great, another great event. I usually go at least one of those days and will join the crew. So starting May 13 through the 17th, if they don't get you the first time, they'll be coming the next day, so just, just be ready and be patient. And as, in conjunction with that, just a reminder here, the landfill hours during that week will be, I think the landfill hours are always 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Saturday hours are 8:00 to 11:00, 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. And during that week, residents can dump as many times as they want for free, but then keep in mind during the year, you can bring, four different times throughout the year, you can, you can bring a truckload and dump for free at the landfill. So please utilize that, keep the trash out of the backyards, and the front yards, and the houses, and the garages, and all the places. So...
Mayor, can you put out construction materials?
No, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to put out construction materials. So you can't. If you reshingle your house, don't put all those shingles out. That's not, not how it works. So, thank you, President Sandy, for the reminder. Were you planning on putting construction materials out?
Files.
All right. Even President Sandy can't. All right. That's it for Mayor's announcements. We'll move on to two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1 is a presentation from the Special Event Ad-Hoc Committee for an update.
Ms. Lundmark, please.
Sorry about that. So at the direction of City Council, staff was asked to take a look at the entire special event process, and we formed an ad hoc committee, consisted of Councilmember Lunskey, Lieutenant Zimmel, and Sergeant K. Brown from the Police Department, Jill Proctor with the DDA, as well as Anna Rosberg, and some of her other staff from the Alara Center. Goals of the committee were just to look at the overall process and make sure that we have a process that's effective and efficient for not only staff, but also for people who are putting on events in our community. And with that, we looked at the programs we're using, the forums we're using, the criteria to review events, and then also any billings associated with events to ensure that all are appropriate, and then make changes where needed. are appropriate, and then make changes where needed. Next slide, I just kind of outlined what the process has been. We didn't come up with any grand, major changes as far as overall process, other than with the retirement of Ms. Simeoni, the main point of contact now is in finance, where we do some of the other licensing for, that relates a lot to events. We have made some program updates, so that now the program's going to function a little bit better. We're kind of mid-update right now, but event planners will be able to log in and kind of help manage some of their own events and improve communication back and forth between staff and event planners. We've also looked at some efficiencies and standardization in billings, in forms, and how departments communicate with each other on this. So, overall, I think it's been a very good process, process improvements, and just looking at things to update them a little bit. I included on the slide, these are the various things that are looked at for every event, whether it's a block party, or if it's a major outdoor concert or festival of some kind. We have people from every department of the city that take a look at the events, and we're not proposing any changes in any of that. We will go through and we'll still do the due diligence that we have been in reviewing these, and if red flags come up for any event, we would bring that event to City Council and make you aware of the event, get your decision on changes, or if the event should happen or not happen, which has been the practice, as we most recently saw with Sigma World, an event that's happened for many years. This year, staff noted some red flags based on past history, and so we brought that event forward. Other events that don't have red flags, we'll continue to administer those administratively and keep things running smoothly and efficiently, and creating some good quality-of-life events in town. So, one of the other items that I guess we did look at also is billing for services, and kind of came up with some more refined policies for those, so we have a little better consistency on how those are being handled. In general, it is, as it says on the slide, if there's, if the event is something where revenues can be recouped, then passing on the cost of those services for things like police department participation and public safety needs for the event. And if there's no fees collected, and we would require a police presence, then that would be something that we would not pass on cost for, so. Next steps, we look at continuing on with finishing, upgrading the program to provide even more efficiency and effectiveness than what we have now, and we'll continue the administrative process across the city with all departments reviewing their own areas and providing input, and again, bringing to you anything that we see red flags with, or events that may come, be proposed that would have a concern for any department of the city. With that, I guess, we would stand for questions. I'm here, Lieutenant Zimmel is here, as is Jill Proctor from the Downtown Development Association, so any questions or...
Any questions for Ms. Lundmark? All right, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Lunskey, for helping out with that. Much appreciated.
Moving on to 2.2 Proclamations. We have a few of them. Workers Memorial Proclamation, April 28th, Public Service Employee Recognition Week, Oncology Nursing Month, May 2024, Mental Health Month, May 2024, and Letters, Carriers, Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive, May 11th.
All right, thank you. I'm going to read these off, and then, Mr. Honda, if you want to get yourself ready, we'll have you come up at the end. You've got a little bit of time yet, because there's five of them, but I'll have you come and talk about the food drive, just like you did last year. We really appreciate you coming and making the time to be here, so. All right, I will start with Workers Memorial Day Proclamation. So, I Brandon Bocinski, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim Sunday, April 28th, 2024, as Workers Memorial Day in the City of Grand Forks, and encourage all citizens and organizations to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of public employees at all levels, including federal, state, county, and with distinction the City of Grand Forks. All right, Public Service Employee Recognition Week. I Brandon Bocinski, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, do hereby claim, proclaim May 6th through the 10th, 2024, as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Grand Forks, and encourage all citizens and organizations to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of public employees at all levels, including federal, state, county, and with distinction the City of Grand Forks. And we've got Oncology Nurses Month. I Brandon Bocinski, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, hereby proclaim May 2024 as Oncology Nursing Month, and urge all residents of the Grand Forks to join in the observance of and participate in activities to recognize the special contribution of oncology, that oncology nurses provide to the public. All right, and Mental Health Month, May 2024. I Brandon Bocinski, as the Mayor of the City of Grand Forks, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Mental Health Month in the City of Grand Forks, and call on its citizens to support initiatives related to mental health awareness and its importance to a healthy community. And last, but not least, uh-oh, there it is. Letter Carriers Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive Day. So, I Brandon Bocinski, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim May 11th, 2024, as Letter Carrier's Food Drive Day Branch 517 in Grand Forks, and call on its citizens to join in its recognition and celebration. Mr. Honda, come on up and tell us a little bit more about the food drive.
May I make a few comments about Workers Memorial?
Absolutely.
Workers Memorial happened this week, this year, on April 25th. It doesn't always happen on April 28th, the official day. There were 12 deaths in North Dakota the year before. Work-related jobs, we didn't get them out in Minnesota for some reason. The deaths include strokes, heart attacks, drowning, drowning and something else, and then one was a bee sting. And 12 deaths in North Dakota, that doesn't seem like a lot, but my estimation, one death is too many in North Dakota. So I encourage everybody here that's got employees, including the city, to start maybe once a month doing job talks on safety. One 10-minute job talk could save a life, and that's what we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, on the Letter Carrier Food Drive, I guess I should know what I'm talking about, since I've been the food drive coordinator for 30 years out of 31 in Grand Forks, but there's no bags. You put your bag out by your mailbox. If you've got a lot of food and you were on a walking route, and you put it out by your house, and it's too heavy, the letter carrier will put it by the curb, and when he drives by to his next relay, he'll pick it up there, and there'll be people like myself and other carriers and volunteers driving by to take it off the load to bring it to the post office. People have said to me that they feel embarrassed about going to a food bank, and I've said, "Why?" And they said, "Well, some of my neighbors might see me there." And I always tell them, "Well, one day, you could be driving by a food bank, and you could see your neighbor in that line requesting food. It could happen to any one of us." In Grand Forks, four out of 10 children under the age of 10 go to bed hungry. I'm not saying without food, hungry. That's a shame. The biggest and richest nation in the world, and that's a shame. We need to do more. Stamp out that hunger. That's what we need to do. That's what the letter carriers do. It's been going on for 33 years. It was a pilot program the first year, then Grand Forks Branch 517 got into it the second year. Another guy was the food drive coordinator, then after it was over with, he said, "I'm done. There's too much work here. I can't handle it." And everybody looked at me and said, "You're the new food drive coordinator?" And even though I'm retired, 30 years later, I'm still doing it. But it's passion for me, and I hope it's a passion for the citizens in the Grand Forks to help stamp out hunger. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give Mr. Honda a round of applause.
Thank you.
So, get some food donations out by your mailbox. What date was it again? May 11th?
Yes.
On that Saturday. And, Mr. Honda, we hope to have you back next year and for the next 30 years, God willing, so thank you for being here.
I hope so.
All right, we'll move on to three public hearings and second readings of ordinances.
3.1 Public Hearing and Determination of Protest. A request to vacate 40th Avenue South right away and two adjacent utility easements lying within Opportunity Park, first three subdivision. No protests on this.
Unreceived. All right, and we'll open up the public hearing now to hear any protests on item 3.1. Step up to the mic if you're here for item 3.1. Seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing portion, and I'll move it to council for decision. Comment or approval?
No approval.
Got a motion to approve from Mr. Weigel, second from Ms. Osowski. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. I believe that's it for three. Move on to four, citizen comments as it relates to action items. Any comments this evening? There are done. Move on to action items. Administration is going to poll 5.9 and 5.10, and then just for the council's awareness, so whatever the recommendation was at the Cal, for example, 5.8 was voted to not approve, so that would, that recommendation would carry if we, as we go to a consent vote. Any other items outside of 5.9 and 5.10 that council wishes to pull for further discussion?
Mayor, 5.2 and 5.4, please.
I'll take 5.3 and 5.7.
All right.
Which one did we not approve again?
5.8, so.
Okay, so we don't need to pull that one?
No. Unless you want to change your mind.
I don't.
Okay. Any others? All right, so we're looking for approval based on Cal recommendations for item 5.1, 5.5, 5.6, and 5.8.
I second.
Got a motion from President Sandy, second from Ms. Osowski. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. So we've got Ms. Dorsett, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.7, 5.9, and 5.10.
5.2 Committee Appointment, Reappointment for the Library Board.
Mr. Mayor, could we vote on the...
Sure.
...appointing separately, please?
Let's do, we'll do.
I'm ready to vote.
Sounds good. We'll do Paul Trainer first.
Move approval.
Got a motion to approve from President Sandy, second from Ms. Osowski. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously, and we'll go 5.2B is Becky Ronkowski. Motion?
I'll move approval.
Motion approval from President, or from Vice President Weber, second from Ms. Lunskey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4 to 3 with Kavami, Sandy, and Osowski dissenting.
5.3 Plans and Specs for Project 8839 Downtown Alley Reconstruct.
Thank you. Ms. Osowski, anything for run, 5.3?
I guess I just want to talk about this a little bit more. So who actually is requesting the alley to be paved? Is it Franklin, or is it XL Energy?
Or is it the city?
Yeah, or is it the city, I guess.
Mayor Bocinski and Councilmember Osowski. I think right now, as the whole plan was that we were going to bury the lines, the XL Energy lines, and hook up the, I think there's four, four or five buildings, to include Franklin and forth. And so when we buried those lines, that alley was basically deconstructed, so it's a gravel alley. So the intent was to come back this year to then pave that alley so that we would have a long-life alley. So I think it was all part of that overall project, and then when we took a look at who should pay for the alley, is, we looked at, as part of that pilot project, that the city would cover that cost to pave that alley. Obviously, XL Energy participated, the developer, Northridge. We did hold harmless any of the other building owners on the other side of the alley, just because they didn't need their lines buried, and we wanted to make sure the project moved forward in a good way, and thankfully, we got a lot of participation and cooperation. So when we got down to the alley rehabilitation itself, generally, as you know, you approve street rehabilitations with, most of those are funded with the city sales tax. Those are generally 80/20, so 80% cost shared by the city, and then 20% special assessed. In this case, with the alley, we're recommending 100% of it be paid by the city, and the reason is, is that we would have to assess both sides of the alley for that, and so try to maintain, you know, the, I'll call it the east side of the alley, to hold them harmless, that we would pave this particular alley. And it is something new that we haven't done in a long time. It is a kind of a new pilot example of trying to create an alleyway that will, you know, function as a street, will connect the various parking lots to the downtown. So that was a thought on this particular alley, and trying to really put a period on this particular project.
So it was agreed upon, like, with the pilot, then, that this would happen? Going forward, us as a city, are we going to come up with maybe a different way to kind of, because right now, there are no guidelines or rules about assessments on the alleys, correct?
You are correct, but I think the closest we have is, we do have roadway reconstruction cost shares, and I think, moving forward, I think we should look at something like an 80/20 cost split. You know, we've got a request, the other alley that's in tough shape, really tough shape, is behind Olive An, and so likely, we need to reconstruct that alley next. And so we'll come to you with a new policy that you can affirm, just because I think that, if you walk down that alley, that's another one who's seen a lot of construction, and that I think needs, really needs to be reshaped next year. But we'll bring that project in with you, to you, and then also look at a, coming up with a policy so that everyone knows.
Okay, I'd like to see a policy, I guess, before we continue. I mean, I understand that this one is part of the pilot, and so, I mean, I do move approval on that, but just going forward, I would like to see a policy brought to us, so.
We will do that.
I'll second that motion. We got a motion to approve, we got a second. President Sandy, further comments?
Yeah, I think alleys downtown are different than alleys in residential neighborhoods. Generally, you have more people visiting businesses, and so I think it's important that we be strategic, but make sure that we keep those alleys paved. So I agree, getting a policy formed is a good idea, because I'm hoping that eventually our downtown starts to stretch, and there are more alleys that we need to pave. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I agree. We could, does, would you propose Planning and Zoning start that discussion, or you want the council to discuss that, that policy decision, or what would you prefer, Ms. Osowski?
Doesn't matter.
I know, do you want to do it, or do you want the Planning and Zoning Committee to do it, I guess?
It doesn't matter. Whatever you guys think is best.
Okay.
I think, well, Mayor will probably bring it back to a committee of the whole. I think, because it's a funding, which is in the city council's purview.
Sounds good. All right, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. I believe that was unanimous, approved unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Weigel, that was an affirmative vote?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
5.4 Sidewalk List Number One for Project 8752 2024 Sidewalks.
All right, thank you.
I am ready to vote.
Sounds good. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Got a motion to approve, and a second from Ms. Osowski. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
All right, motion carries with Sandy dissenting.
Thank you.
5.7 Withdrawal Management Center Transition Presentation Attached and Letters of Support.
All right, thank you. So opening up, Ms. Osowski, did you have something on further information?
Yeah, I just have, I guess, some questions and just some comments about it. So I understand the part about us kind of transitioning away from detox, and I 100% support that. The part that I really don't understand or agree with is that now we're going to be turning this second place, or the place where we used to hold our detox, now we're going to turn it into basically a second mission for people who basically break the rules enough that you're not allowed in our first mission. And I really, I understand that there are some of those people out there, but I have a hard time... understand that there are some of those people out there. But I, I have a hard time continuously funding things like this when people aren't even abiding by the rules. Like, if, if you're getting kicked out of the mission, obviously, there's a problem, you know? And we have enough of, you know, now we have social detox, we have Spectra, we have all these other nonprofits that are there to support them. And I just don't understand why we need a completely different mission. And then also, who exactly is going to come back and ask for funding from us in twenty twenty-five? Is it Housing Authority? Or is it the people that's actually picking up detox? Because I do not think that we should be giving any more money to Housing Authority, especially, I mean, it's like we're getting something off our plate and then we're just creating a whole nother situation with another mission and now we're funding that. I, I don't understand how this is for, for the best. I, I just don't understand it. You guys have me sold at getting rid of detox, you know? But this whole bringing in Housing Authority, it almost just seems stupid. And I heard our mission wasn't even full. And so, I don't under, I mean, then if people don't qualify for this mission, then in five years, is Housing Authority going to come back to us and be like, oh, well, these people don't meet, make the rule, meet the rules for this mission. So, now we need to lower the bar and spend more city tax dollars. I, I mean, there are rules in society and people need to be held accountable to these rules, so.
Mayor Bochensky, I can answer some of the questions. You know, some of it, you know, is, you know, how you, your principles, right? And how you believe life should be. I think in this case, just from a management perspective, I'll speak to that, is, you know, the city of Grand Forks, we, we lead a lot of the issues here. And back in, I'm going to say, twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, there was a need for, to build a, to stand up a social detox facility. And at that time, the city of Grand Forks stepped forward. We had the, the building where it's located right now. Later, we did sell that building to the, to the current tenant and got a, you know, a really good lease rate for, for that particular building. But the city helped bring all the partners together from Northeast Human Services to the county and others to help fund social detox and got it up and going. It was really meant as an interim strategy with the city leading it in a city facility to try to close some gaps. The other partner was Altru, sorry, like that. Because the other issue that we had is, we had people that had issues related to mainly alcohol. There was nowhere for them to go. They couldn't go to the mission, because the mission does not accept anybody who's intoxicated. Altru didn't want them in the emergency room. Our police, it was in the best interest of our police officers to drive them around town or keep them at the police department building. So, this is really for that, for that opportunity where we needed to place individuals where there was no place else for them to go. And I think it's, it's functioned well over the last years. And not only did we get the, the city, Northeast Human Services, Altru, and ourselves together to agree to do this, we also came up with various cost shares, including from the state of North Dakota. So, we've operated under that paradigm for a while. And then we had the Housing Authority come up and want to step up to actually manage this. And we could hand it off to them. And I think the advantage of handing it off to them is that they can bring other grant opportunities, other housing wherewithal to this particular program that we, we don't as a public health department, or we don't as a city of Grand Forks. So, we think it's a lot of value-addedness to it. And I know you're concerned about giving money to the Housing Authority. But if they hadn't, if they hadn't stepped forward, we would be funding our cost shares presumably going out into all the various years. So, all they really are asking for, which is a really great thing, is they want the remaining allocation for twenty-four. They've asked for a commitment in twenty-five, and that money would, would be asked for by the Housing Authority.
Do we know how much money that is?
I'll have to ask Tess. I, I think it was in the PowerPoint. But it's, we all have various cost shares. So, what they're asking for is the allocation that we would presumably put in the mayor's budget in twenty-five and that the city council would approve it, because you've, it's been approved over the last several years. But they would work really hard to come back in twenty-five for the twenty-six budget and beyond to try to at least reduce that financial commitment among all the partners. So, I think it's, there's a lot of wins. I don't see a lot of losses in this. But with that, I'd ask Tess to come up here and, and further augment what I just said.
Mayor Bochensky and Councilmember Osowski, the request would be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is level funded for the requests from this year. We're augmenting the operational support for twenty-four seven staffing through the city opioid settlement funds, which you also approved. And that is to the tune of fifty thousand dollars.
So, it'll be fifty thousand dollars from our opiate fund and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which we normally fund our own social detox?
So, that's just for this year. The fifty thousand dollars was a one-time fund.
Okay, okay.
And so, there, my point in bringing that up is that costs are increasing. And so, the, the funding ask is also increasing, which is what makes Housing Authority a great partner because of that additional grant opportunities they qualify for to help, help that. Otherwise, I'm coming to you guys and asking for more money.
I guess if I was going to volunteer to take over a program from the city, I would have a way to fund it myself. So, but that's just my own personal opinion. I disagree with it. I, I think we're just building more social services. And I don't agree with it at all. I agree with getting rid of stuff, but I feel like now we're just adding something on top of it. And so.
Any further questions, comments? I think, let's speak quickly. I think from the city standpoint, the reduction of eight and a half FTEs from public health, certainly there's some oversight expense and some management expense that we won't have to overtake. So, we appreciate that. I think we all wish there wasn't people that had drug and alcohol problems. Be a lot easier world. Hasn't been that way for a thousand years. I don't see that changing anytime soon. When that happens, that would be a great day. And I appreciate the people that work to try to help that. It's a cost. I think we're going to incur the cost with the police department, or we're going to incur the cost by people walking around the streets, around families, kids, and places we probably don't want them. So, regardless, I really appreciate the work that you've done in, in coming up with this plan. I think it's a win-win for the community. It's a win-win for housing. It's a win-win for the city. So, thank you for the diligence on that. Any other comments, President Sandy?
Mayor, I think it's also important to point out that the, the mission is its own not-for-profit that doesn't get funding from the city of Grand Forks. They may apply for some of our CDBG funds, but ultimately, they're self-funded. And Sue Sherrick has done an amazing job taking the homeless population. And at the time when she took over, the homeless population in our community was incredibly large and was, they were having a lot of problems. And she changed up some of the rules. We got the LeGrave building built. We're able to permanently house many of our chronically homeless people in our community. And by them implementing rules that provide what I would consider a very safe and good environment for, for the people that are staying there, she's, they have been able to find permanent housing for so many and not bring in the element that often causes problems. And so, I think they've done a good job. And similarly, by providing the social detox center, we provided a place for the people that couldn't go to the mission, an avenue for a safekeeping. And I think ultimately, it's been very positive for our community. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy. Anything further from council? All right, I guess we'll be looking for a motion, or?
I'll move approval.
Got a motion, President Sandy, second from Ms. Lunskey. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries with Osowski dissenting.
Five point nine, Beacon by Epic project update.
Mr. Phelan, please.
Mayor Bochensky, members of the city council, I'm, go over some summary slides for you, and then I'm going to ask Dan Gossett to come up here and give you, talk to more of the details of the development agreement, what, what we had before and what we're asking, what the request is for the changes. And I'll also have Marine Dorsett talk about some of the financials. Lance, Lance is here from Epic, along with his team that I see over there. So, they'll be prepared to follow up after the, our city representatives have done. So, I just want to highlight, you know, the Beacon by Epic project, as you can see with the, the groundbreaking with Governor Burgum, I think it's important to remember this, the Beacon by Epic project was one of four projects that we, as the city council, approved in the midst of the, of the pandemic. And I think this really helped fuel our growth throughout the city. And as you recall, on, I think on that February one date of twenty twenty-one, we got the other taxing entities to approve this particular TIF, along with three other projects. At that same meeting, we had Franklin and Fourth, which is right outside our window here. Memorial Village, that's wrapping up on the university campus. And then Block V or Block Five was the, was the fourth one that you approved on, on that particular date. So, it was kind of a big moment for Grand Forks in the midst of the, the pandemic to get moved forward with that. And, and really a good faith way of that we were going to continue to grow and develop once we got past the pandemic. And I think we've proven that out as we move forward. The, the fifth project that moved forward soon thereafter was the Olive An Hotel. And we, we can see that got, was the first to be completed. But there were kind of those five projects that moved forward. And, you know, the Block V or Block Five project is, you know, hasn't gone as far as we anticipated. And then here we are this evening with the Beacon by Epic that we're talking about, the two buildings that are up, the public event space, and then finally, the third building that they want to have a discussion with you at this point. Mr. Gossett, then we followed up on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one with the development agreement itself that spelled out not only the, the tax increment financing on this, but the, all the various other development activities about how we're going to operate and, and own the various parcels. So, that was more of an in-depth. And when I, Mr. Gossett's going to go over that in more details.
Mr. Phelan, could I just jump in real quick? I think of those five, Epic Project's the only one where they're paying a hundred percent of their taxes regardless of the TIF. They're paying a hundred percent. It's just the eighty percent gets routed somewhere else, whereas the others would have seen, would have received another benefit or would be paying less. Is that correct? Are those five that went through?
You are correct, yeah. As, as you recall, I think the Franklin and Fourth has a hundred percent twenty-year tax incentive. Memorial Village, I think, had a ninety percent twenty-year tax incentive. The Block V, I think, had a less percentage on that, but that was a more of a rehab. And then I think the Olive An Hotel, I think, I'm going to say, plus or minus, has about a fifteen-year seventy-five percent tax incentive on that. I think the other thing that was really important on this is that we really taken a chance at the same time, I should have mentioned this, Mayor, is the fact that this was going to be a revenue bond versus just a, a straight tax incentive. And we were going to use that eighty percent tax increment to help fund a public event space. There was lots of discussion about Town Square and where were you going to rehab that particular space? Or, and then we did do some with our planning consultant, looked at how we could rehab that space. And it was about five million dollars back in that data to renew that facility and, and make it, and make it better. The challenge with a lot of things, we want to do this with larger-scale projects, is it still was going to be the same square, no matter what we, we did with that particular space. The other issue we had with that five million dollar investment in the Town Square is that we didn't have a revenue source other than using some of our cash reserves. And so, when you looked at the Beacon by Epic and the Public Event Square, went through the revenue bond, we found an avenue in which to help pay for a large majority of that public event space, provide a, I think currently right now, over a forty thousand square foot space that we didn't have at the Town Square. And with all the amenities, we wanted from year-round recreation, whether it's with the stage for summer concerts and events, and then obviously with the ice arena during the winter. So, there were lots of win-wins. And so, that's why we say, well, let's, let's go forward and let's try to get something out of the tax incentive. And really, what the public was going to get is we were going to get a city public event space. And so, most of the projects, if you look out over at Franklin and Fourth, it's a great development. It's going to add a lot of value to the community from a tax-based perspective. But the community is not getting anything in particular, other than more growth and development and more tax increment to, to the city of Grand Forks eventually. These were the kind of highlights. And Dan's going to go over a deeper dive. But it was set up as three buildings with a public plaza. We were estimating the public plaza at that point to be seven and a half to eight million dollars. And estimated at that eighty percent increment with the, with the value of those three buildings, we were estimating we could deliver a bond of six and a half to seven and a half. And of course, interest rates have gone up significantly since, even on, on a bond, what we were, we couldn't get in that, in that vein. We also had committed one point one five million dollars of beautification funds to help close on the funding gap. We knew there would be a funding gap between the revenue bond and what the costs were going to be. So, we did set that aside in, in the budget. And we've been carrying that over the last few years in, in our budget. On December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, they came back and, and asked us to amend the TIF agreement, the city council that approved that. I think the major, two major things I think that changed is, is number one, what's, to bring the beautification funds near the beginning of the, the development as opposed to when the development was completed. And so, to help with cash flow as, as they started spending money on the, on the, on the event square, that they could start drawing upon that one point one million dollars. The other thing they talked about was, they were looking at a hotel concept, you know, theoretically looking at a seven-story building, maybe with five stories of, of a hotel. And then the, the remaining two floors would likely be apartments. So, that was the concept at that point in time. The other thing that we changed as part of this is that we had this advisory group that was set up. One of the other amendments is that we eliminated that advisory group and really just had the event space managed by this, the city of Grand Forks through the city council. And then the thought was that we would have beacon events or epic events operate the day-to-day operation of that particular space. So, that was the intent. We kind of simplified the operation of that space. I'm going to have Dan go over some of the particulars of the amendment regarding how the money was going to be dispersed. So, I'm not going to, I'm not going to drone on about these, because Dan's going to go over those in particular. Here we are today on April eighteenth, and, and another amendment is requested at this time, is that they are not able to build that third building at this point in time. And so, it's not an if, it's a, it's a when. But really, what, what they discussed with us is, really, they would like to see us move forward with selling the bond for the, for the first two buildings, that the, the second bond for the third building is not imminent and it will have to come at some point in the future. So, what we discussed with them is, what does that baseline project look like? And so, when we looked at the bond capacity, that's four point eight million for those two buildings, as opposed to the six, six and a half to seven and a half that was envisioned with the three buildings. The city beautification funds remain the same at that one point one five. Developer funds now are at six hundred thousand versus the two and a half million that was, is part of that amendment. So, we're at about the six point five five million dollars for that public event baseline project, as opposed to seven and a half to eight with the, with the third building. So, what we discussed before we brought it to the committee of the whole is, you know, what, what can we still get done? And we wanted to make sure on behalf of the taxpayers and everyone that really are, everyone that is excited about this particular project so that when you walk into the public event space, it's what people felt we bargained for. And so, it will have all the general plaza construction. It will have the stage. We insisted that we needed the water splash feature completed as part of this project. And then we know the ice arena is an important mechanism with this. And so, we insisted that we needed that. Some of the concerns that they had is that the ice chill, the permanent ice chiller is about a million dollars, and they did not have that ability in the budget. And so, there were some discussions about renting an ice chiller. Thankfully, they got a, a really good deal from the Ralph Ingolstadt Arena on one of their Zambonis. So, thank you to Jody Hodson and the Ralph and what they're doing. And we'll have all the sound, light, and wifi that we wanted for this public event space. And then, as you recall, in the, in the first building or the nineteen twenty-three building, there's a, a public space for restrooms, you know, kind of changing notes, sorts of things. That space will continue to be in there. That will help support the, the event space itself, whether it's during the summer or in the winter. What will it not be? And we talked a couple of weeks ago about some of the bells and whistles, the video and technology, the marquee entrance sign that we showed, and the purchase of this ice chiller. And we'll rent. So, I, I'm, and when we're done here, Mayor, we're going to ask Lance to come up and talk. We've had a lot of discussions about that chiller and who's going to pay the rent. And is, are there some other options of how we could purchase that particular chiller? So, there'll be more discussions. And then, we're not going to get all the furniture, fixtures, and equipment as, as part of the phase one project. So, if you move forward, we would ask you on June twenty twenty-four to authorize sale of bonds. We'd get those awarded in August, and then those, those would be available in September. And that would be similar to the timeframe of the construction. They anticipate they would conclude construction in September, when the bond proceeds would be available to pay for this particular space. um to pay for this particular space. I just wanted to go back in time. I got uh to thinking over the weekend about how how did we get here? And um, so I'm going to show you uh one example. This particular project, so I'm going to show, the Northern Heights project is right here. And this is on the site of the uh the Civic Auditorium for Grand Forks. Um, this Aurora building, Aurora at Grig Square, is on the site of the parking lot for the um Civic Auditorium. And so I think these, this project is really important in the sense of it was the first project post um flood protection certification that occurred in 2008. So we had done a lot of downtown redevelopment in our community post-flood uh from the brownstones to various projects, putting a lot of infrastructure, really trying to preserve our downtown so that we could build off of at some point. I would say this is the first project where we move forward with using tax incentives to try to grow and develop uh the downtown. And you can see the Aurora is a three-story building and 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 the Northern Heights is a four-story building. And this is really seen as kind of our first option of moving forward. And you can see where we gave less of a TIF, but we also had, you know, we gave the land away uh for development. We also had various housing funds at that time that we could dedicate to the to the two projects. I would just point to what the values, what values do we currently have in the building? We have six, 6.4 on the Northern Heights building in this location and almost 3 million um on the Aurora building. So that's about um a little over $9 million that we we have value in this. So when you look back in time, I think in 2010, when these were, 2010 and 2011, when these were going up, this was seen as, well, you know, that's about as good as we can get in Grand Forks. And so I think all of these downtown projects, all the things that we did after the flood, built to being able to redevelop the Civic Auditorium site. And you think about what we used to have with the Civic Auditorium versus what we have at the Alara Center, it is um pretty awestrucking what we do now compared to what, you know, we did prior to the Alara Center. Um, then just trying to compare with Epic, and I know this was a bit, we took more of a risk. Let's try to do something bigger and better than what we had done before. And so when this project came along, you can see what we've done. We have two uh currently seven-story buildings, but we're going to get a third one at some point. But if you look at just the current values, you know, they're at $30 million versus the $9 million that where we took those two spaces um alone, where we've added so much more value um in taxable value. And then we've also been able to get a uh public event square as part of this development. Whereas if you look at the two apartment buildings that we built in 2010 and 11, really, there's no public space there um as as we move forward. So I think we've gained more value. We've gotten a public amenity, and it just shows that we've been successful over time, that we've been able to really deliver projects um in that. Which kind of leads to the the water treatment plant is probably our next one. So if you look at what we did with the Civic Auditorium, I think if you look at the almost two-block area, the water treatment plant, we always wanted this as the last, one of our last projects, knowing that we would really have to build to this particular project. This water treatment plant site is probably the equivalent of taking that Civic Auditorium's um location that we we developed in 2010, if you added in the the hotel location. That's essentially what the water treatment plant site is for area of what we're going to be able to redevelop and really build upon as we move forward. So it shows that we've been continuing to grow and develop and doing different mechanisms to try to grow and develop. And um, I was talking to Council Member Vean, is I I think over time, we've had the initial agreement, we've had an amendment, and there's one additional amendment. Um, I would, what I like to ask Dan to do is kind of go over um all those various amendments to show what really has changed over time.
Mayor and council members, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Phelan uh provided pretty good uh oversight as to the various agreements that that have uh developed over time. Um, initially, right, we we did the initial agreement. Um, that 1.1 million dollars of uh beautification funds would not be paid until the plaza was completed. Um, under the terms of that original agreement, also, we were only going to pay uh whatever the the two buildings would support plus that 1.1 million dollars, even though the cost uh for the plaza would would have exceeded that. Uh, the theory being that the the final third of the payment would be paid when the third building is up. Uh, that was to incentivize the developer to to finish that third building so that we had the value of all three buildings. But we wouldn't have paid them uh until that third building was up, although we would have had title to the public plaza in advance of that. Uh, so there is, it kind of described as two closings. The first closing, when we got the plaza, uh, we'd we'd uh provide the 1.1 million dollars plus the amount of the bond uh based upon those two buildings. And then there'd be a second uh closing uh once that third building is up that would finish off the reimbursement for that public plaza uh component. Uh, again, the amount of the bond is driven by the value of the buildings um and really driven by what the what the TIF revenues can uh support and be able to service. Um, so I gave an example uh in a in an earlier meeting that right now, we're taking 80% of the property tax uh dollars that would otherwise be, that are being paid. So the the property owner isn't going to see any difference. There, as the mayor pointed out, the the property owner is still paying 100% of that property tax. So if you use a thousand-dollar amount, 800, $800 would be diverted and be used to service that bond. The other 200, $200 then would be uh distributed like any other property tax to the various political subdivisions that that would otherwise receive it. Um, and so it was that $800 and how much that that uh that $800 could be used in my example, how much of that can service the bond? And that that's really what uh drove um how much we'd be paying for this public plaza. There are also, under the terms of that agreement, there are provisions about um the use of the the TIF. If there is, happens to be a deficiency, uh, meaning if for some reason uh those TIF revenues don't come in in an amount sufficient to service the bond, what would we do in that scenario? And under the original agreement, um, there is a method that that we can specially assess for that delta, that difference. Um, and there is some expectation that in the early years uh the amount of the uh uh payment on the bond may be a little higher than what the TIF revenues would be. But in the later years, that would be made up. So there might be uh uh some need to uh go through that uh special assessment process. There also was an ability to borrow from the sales tax funds um as well to to cover that shortfall and then recoup those dollars in the later years. Um, that provision with respect to the deficiency exists in the original agreement. It exists in the amended agreement and will exist under what's being proposed as well. So that doesn't change. Neither does the 80% allocation. None of that changes. The the most significant change in the current agreement from the original one that was approved was that the $1 million, the 1.1 million dollars would be advanced earlier than when the public plaza is completed. And so in order to secure the the $1 million and to really to secure the construction of that public plaza is completed, there were various conditions that had to be satisfied before that 1.1 million dollars would be uh paid out. Those conditions were, first, we would, uh, there'd be some title commitment or some title work that would show that we would have a first mortgage lien on both the public plaza parcel and the the parcel where the third building was be, would be located. In addition, we would then get a mortgage, obviously, from from the developer. Uh, right now, Bank Forward is uh has got a security interest in both of those uh lots. Uh, we would need a subordination agreement from Bank Forward. That has been agreed to. Um, I've prepared this subordination agreement, and Bank Forward has agreed to subordinate their position. So we'd be in a first position, and Bank Forward would be in a second position. Um, in addition, under the agreement as it exists right now, the developer was to deposit anywhere from 2.3 to 2.5 million dollars in a bank account uh at Bank Forward. Uh, those funds would be used exclusively and would be controlled by Bank Forward and be used exclusively for the construction costs for the public plaza. Uh, we'd have to get confirmation that 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 deposit occurred. Uh, we'd also, another condition was that we'd receive confirmation uh from the contractor that with the funds, the 1.1 million dollars of funds that that uh we would be putting in, plus the two to $2 million deposit. In addition, uh, there'd be a loan from Bank Forward um that would be provided, that those sources of funds would be sufficient to complete the public plaza. There'd be some certification from the contractor saying with those, with that amount of money, I can complete the public plaza. Um, the other uh condition before the 1.1 would be distributed would be that that uh Bank Forward had actually closed on their loan with with the developer. It was, I think, at about a 4.6 million dollar loan, somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, also, there is additional requirements. There'd be some certification from the developer that the representations and warranties, there is a number of them in the original agreement, were still true and correct, and there hadn't been any default under the terms of that agreement. Those are all the conditions that had to be satisfied uh before the 1.1. And and today, the 1.1 hasn't been distributed because those conditions haven't been satisfied yet, although they've been, we've been working on it uh up to this point. Um, the the significant change is not necessarily with the 1.1 being advanced early. They're still requesting that. Uh, the one difference in the conditions, all the conditions remain the same for the city advancing those funds on as what's being proposed today, with the exception that instead of depositing the 2.3 and 2.5, it's now a $600,000 number. All the other conditions that were set up in the original agreement are still in play, meaning we'd still have a first lien in in those two parcels. Uh, Bank Forward has to close on their loan. Bank Forward has to subordinate their lien interest. Uh, we still have to have a certification from the contractor that the the source of funds, the deposited funds, the Bank Forward loan, and the 1.1 million dollars would be sufficient to be able to finish the the public plaza. The agreement as as it sits again today, in addition as to what it was originally, we're still going to take title to the public plaza once both of the two buildings are completed, which they are, uh, and the public plaza is completed. We would take title to that. We would then pay those dollars out uh to to the developer to reimburse what are called public costs. And there there are specific uh requirements under the statute uh with respect to what can be reimbursed, what are public costs. And that has been embedded within our, within uh the agreement as well. Um, the 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 difference is, as Mr. Phelan mentioned, is the the third building would not be a part of um the TIF revenues um currently. Um, we would be looking only towards the value of those two buildings to to service the the bonds. If the building, the third building gets built, that still is going to be subject to the TIF. It's still in the TIF district. Uh, and so those revenues could still be used for uh adding, if you needed to, adding to the public plaza or or using uh those funds for maybe retiring the 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 existing bond, uh, things like that. Uh, we could use it for that, but it would still be part of the TIF. It's just that, and I think I mentioned this at the Cow, is you can't expect that that's going to happen. We have to rely upon the two buildings to service the the uh um the the bond. If the third building gets built, that could, that would still be subjected to that TIF. We'd still get 80% of those revenues. Uh, but I, from my perspective, we can't rely upon that as a source of of repayment uh for the bond issuance. Um, all of the the agreements also um have city oversight. Um, there was supposed to be a fairly robust uh method of oversight by city staff with respect to the plans, approval of any cost overruns. Uh, to be candid with you, I'm not sure that that there there was that level of scrutiny that that uh was anticipated, although I think it's it's now been improved uh recently as far as uh making sure that the developer is communicating with city staff as to what's being constructed and and costs and those type of things. Um, so at the end of the day, um, the TIF, the amount of revenues are still the same from the original agreement to the amendment and what's being proposed. That stays the same. Um, the advancement of the 1.1 changed from the original agreement. That was only to be paid once the plaza was done. As under the amended agreement that we have today, that's going to be advanced earlier as long as those conditions are satisfied. Um, the what's being proposed, uh, the difference then is uh instead of three buildings being utilized to repay the bonds, it's the two buildings. And there's a lesser amount that the developer would be contributing in order to get that uh 1.1 million dollars.
Yeah, please, Mr. Webber.
So we, uh, back in 2021, we agreed to the TIF, and we agreed to put up the 1.1 million dollars of beautification funds to support this. There have been some, the city has continued to do what we we had agreed to. There have been some requests for amendments from from the developer. But in the process of those uh requests, you have helped to improve our position so that, uh, I'm thinking of it as the city puts the last dollar in and the possibility of the first dollar out, meaning that in the development of the 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 center, um, the the developer and Bank Forward are putting dollars in before we put any money in. We're not giving them money, uh, and they're going to start building it with our money. That that work has to happen before we're putting any money in. And with that, when I say first dollar out, you've improved our position. So we now have the the first position.
We, we, I think your concept is is correct, except that the 1.1 million dollars is being put in at the same time as the developer money and the bank loan money now, right? And so we're we're would be into it, except that now, uh, in order to get that money before the plaza is done, okay? Before it was, we'd pay the 1.1, once the plaza is done, and we'd now take title, right? Uh, now they're asking for the 1.1 early, and there is a series of conditions, one of which was we'd take a security interest. Um, the other component, I forget, failed to mention this, is that if they don't get the plaza done, I think is by July of 2025, that 1.1 then accrues interest at the rate of 3 and 3% from the moment that we've contributed the money. Um, and so really, what you're doing is, at this point, you become a creditor of the developer because we're borrowing you the 1.1 today. That means you have to perform certain uh tasks. You have to have this completed by a certain, a date certain. Uh, and if it's not, then it truly does become a note. We get the interest rate coming back, and we could foreclose on on both the plaza lot and that third building lot if we needed to uh to recover those dollars. Uh, I can't tell you that there's, it'd be a dollar-for-dollar valuation, but at least we've got some security coming back. We've also got some some certifications that with all those sources of funds, there'd be enough to uh to complete the project. Uh, so to it, to a certain degree, we have tried to secure ourselves as best we can. Uh, if you want the money in advance before it's completed, then these are the conditions you have to satisfy.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Gostad, at this time? And that 1.1 hasn't changed. It's the same dollar figure that was approved in 2021, just the timing of delivery.
Correct.
Okay. So no more, no additional funds are being asked for at this time or throughout the process?
Correct.
And they're still paying 100% on their property tax for those two buildings?
Correct.
But Mr. Vean?
Yeah, Mr. Gostad, or, um, the plaza oversight now, that's changed in with this, was it the one previously or the one now?
It was, um, the original agreement, we were going to have a um kind of an intervening entity that was going to kind of uh be the overseeing uh body. Um, it was called Beacon Events, Inc. Um, and so there, it would be, you know, really Beacon Events, Inc. would then report to the city council, and Beacon Events, Inc. would then be managing with Epic. We got rid of Beacon Events, Inc. because it seemed to be, um, it was unnecessary uh at the end of the day when you started looking at it, and it became uh more complex. Uh, and so we got rid of that with this, with the amended agreement that we have right now. Beacon Events, Inc. would not be the entity. They, there'd be a reporting mechanism directed to the city council.
And could that, what could that look like? That, who's going to manage it, that that space then?
There is a management agreement that's already been uh negotiated and developed. That was part of the amended agreement. It, and and I can tell you that management agreement looks very similar to the type of management agreement you have now with OBG uh with respect to the Alara Center.
Could, could OBG manage this site?
Um, I, yes, they could.
Just as an option, it might have that ability.
Yeah, I can't speak to OBG, but um.
Yeah, I can't either, obviously, but, but. Yeah, I can't either, obviously, but, okay, thank you.
President Sadi.
Mr. Gostad, just a quick question about the agreement. Article 2.1.3, the city and developer agreed to negotiate in good faith at a later date to mutually agree upon the public component plans. That's, public component plans is one of your definitions.
It is.
I believe it illustrates and discusses what the public space would be, the plaza.
Correct.
Correct. Who was involved in that negotiating process?
It was anticipated that those plans would be presented to, I think, the city engineer, city planning, city inspection department were envisioned to be reviewing that.
Okay, did they review them?
Not that I'm aware of.
Right. And so we don't know, we don't have an end result. We don't have, according to the agreement, we didn't actually develop the plans, although Epic has already started construction, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gostad.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gostad. You have any more questions for Mr. Gostad?
Yeah, yeah, just one more question. I think I would tag on to that. So under the development agreement, section 2.4.3, so material changes, you know, it was my assumption that we were here to approve material changes, but I had the same question of when do we approve the initial one? And if that's something that doesn't come to us, then did it ever get approved? I think you already answered that question. Next, section 2.4.5, so the city shall approve all proposed costs. Who's responsible for that?
I think it was envisioned to be the same process, and that was kind of the oversight mechanism that I built into the agreement so that we knew what was going to be planned in the public plaza. We knew what the costs were. And the other thing you had to be mindful of is that, at the end of the day, that public plaza, the city's cost is that $1.1 million. The balance of it is really paid through the property tax revenues, through the 80%. So we'd be getting an asset that's valued at, you know, anywhere from $5 to $7 million, and the city investment would be about 1.1 is where it'd be at. And because those revenue bonds, they are revenue bonds. They're not liabilities of the city, and the source of repayment on those revenue bonds is the property tax revenue, that 80% that I talked about earlier.
Yeah, I think you kind of hit my question right there when you said it could be $5 to $7 million. And that's just where, you know, if we had plans to review, and then we had the modifications to review, and then we had the oversight from our staff to review that, I think that that would provide a lot more clarity, but it just doesn't seem that we have that.
Yeah, it was embedded within the agreement. You know, I wasn't involved. I can't, I wouldn't be able to add much value to any of that type of review. But it was contemplated to have that review by city staff.
Any further questions for Mr. Gostad? Is there a further presentation on some of the plaza, for example, what's going to be there this evening?
Not by me.
No, I figured that.
We have a couple visuals here. Maybe I'd ask Lance maybe to come up and kind of describe some of the...
I think I saw a budget as well. I guess that was...
Yeah. Lance, maybe we'll talk over maybe some of the features here, and then I'll go to some of the slides itself. And I know we've had a lot of discussions about the ice arena and what's going to be a part of that and how we're going to move forward.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I think I can go through the things the plaza will include. And again, I just want to state that it's not things we're cut, there's not things we're cutting out, there's things we're going to get at a later date. We're fully invested to get Building 3 done. Can I give you the date it will be completed? No, I'd love to, but I don't, we're not clear. When interest rates change and commercial picks up, we'll build that third building. The public plaza today, the proposal we have, will be very usable. I was at an event in West Fargo this weekend at the Lights, and it had everything we're going to have. There's 1,000 kids there for Bubble Palooza or something that was there on Saturday. We want to start programming this and bringing more events to downtown, and I think the canvas that we're laying out and proposing will allow us to do many things. Most things that we talked about doing in our original proposal can be accomplished. I know we did talk a little bit about the chiller system, and that is some new information after some conversations with several of you. We did not want to make an adjustment to the operational budget or ask the city or the taxpayer for additional funds to rent a chiller. So Epic, along with others, and when I say others, we've had some very successful talks in the last week with community organizations that would sponsor and invest in that chiller system along with Epic, and we don't want to have that be a burden to the city and the operations budget. So we heard that loud and clear, and I think we found a solution to that. So we would strike that from the things that we will not include. But what will be included is the stage, the water splash feature, the ice arena with non-rented chiller system, one that will provide or find a source outside of our city operational budget to work, sound, light, Wi-Fi. I think, Todd, you did such a good job laying it out. I have really nothing to add to what will be included. The things that won't be included are a lot of the IT video technology. The one thing we want to do and get done as soon as possible is a video board on the back of the stage. It's an element that is important to the plaza. We just don't have the dollars today without that third building capacity to do so. But like the chiller, we'll do everything we can to find a solution to bring that to fruition as soon as possible. Video and technology, our lights will be operated by switches. Our speakers will have volume knobs. It's just not the computerized system that we see being placed in this plaza in the future when Building 3 happens. The marquee entrance sign, I really struggle with even doing that today if we had the funding for it, just until we have the plan set for Building 3. Where it's going to sit, what's the best viewpoint, what's the best place with that marquee sign, ice chiller I spoke about. And then, you know, furniture fixtures and equipment, again, we're going to have a lot of the basics, a lot of things we need to operate day to day. It's just, instead of having, you know, 40 sets of tables and chairs, we're going to have 25. Instead of having, you know, 15 different games for people to come and play in the free plaza every day, we'll have 10. It'll just be a lower amount to start. But, you know, again, I've spoken to a lot of you, it's in our best interest to get this plaza to be the best possible space it can be. It's right outside the doors of our $30 million of investment. We understand it's frustrating, but it's frustrating for us, too.
I think Mayor Pachansky, the other thing as part of the review is, obviously, we've had some false starts, but I think building inspections have been reviewed from a construction perspective. And I know, Lance, you've engaged with Ryan Brooks and our city planning department as part of the various features about what we're going, moving forward with. So I think with this and with all the involvement with Bank Forward and others, we'll have a detailed look about what we're getting and what we're paying for, and we won't be expending any of our funds until we are able to reimburse.
If this is approved tonight, when do you expect the square to be open to the public?
September is our hope, and I only say that because dependent on the pouring of that center ice. But I've engaged in conversations with a few others just to be able to speed up that to ensure we can have ice and be ready before the fall.
So for the most part, I mean, obviously, you've got weather conditions, but you're ready to go to start in that plaza immediately?
Absolutely.
I think the other thing, Mayor Pachansky, we've heard specifically because the hockey arena is, or the ice arena is going to be the first thing that's going to get completed and where the first events will take place, is that there is excitement in the community with the hockey community being able to hold events at this space. So when tournaments come into town, that not only will you have an indoor experience with your team, but you also have an outdoor experience. And so there's a lot of excitement, and I think when Lance is talking about the community wanting to step up to help with some of the funding is because they want to have an ice arena that's first class, that will have a steady condition, and they're willing to invest in that facility. And so I think, Lance, you're working on finalizing that, but I think it speaks to the fact that the community wants this ice arena, they're going to use it, and it adds one more sheet of ice that they need.
Well, I can probably speak to that a little bit, but certainly adding another sheet of ice for those Tuesdays, Thursdays, those weekends, probably the lowest cost way you're going to add an ice rink available to the community that I can think of that's going to be functional for a large part of the year, so. Was there further? It looks like there's more, is there more slides to go through?
I think there were, maybe Lance, talk about, if you don't mind, the two images that you sent us.
Yeah, we threw in a couple new images, just, you know, every day at the park, and this is using furniture that we've proposed. And like Todd said, we've provided Mr. Brooks with backup to all of our budgetary items as well as detail such as these chairs, spinning chairs, benches, things of that nature. So this is kind of just an everyday plaza. The other picture was just a rendering of a concert night at the plaza.
All right, any questions? I'm sure for Lance and the Epic team? Yeah, please, Ms. Osowski.
I guess I have one question. So this is your second time in front of the committee now. You came once, and now you're back again. Now, whose financial oversight was this? Was it the city of Grand Forks', was it the developer? I'm just wondering how we got into this situation in the first place. I mean, I'm not in finances, but just by watching the news, you could tell about three and a half years ago, as the government was handing out $600 checks, that we probably weren't on a path to lowering interest rates. So I'm just kind of wondering how we got into this situation in the first place? And whose oversight was it?
Councilman Osowski, you know, I think, just to be clear with the council, and I've explained this to a handful of you as we've talked through how Epic does projects, each of our projects, so there'll be three buildings there at some point of time. Currently, there's two, that was two separate projects. The way we do projects is building by building. We're approached by a partner or come up with an idea, somehow we come to the thought of, should we do a building here? At that point, we look at the city, the needs maybe of the community, what seems to be the most sensible thing to build? And as we grow that, we build a design, then we get a price on how much it costs to build that building, and then we'll find out, you know, how much rent do we need to support that building, you know, how much commercial space should it have, all those factors. And if we think it is a good investment, then we'll go to investors. At that point, we'll have that discussion with investors. Here's what we believe will happen. Here's the current interest rates, not what's happening three years down the line, but here's the current interest rates. Here's what the deal looks like today. At that point, if we had investment dollars, and as a company, if we're positive and think that this is a project to move forward with, we do. And then we build that building and move forward. That's what we did with the first two buildings. So the third building isn't financed. There's no debt in it, there's no investors, because we have not found a project that's viable in this climate of high interest rates to move forward. It's, when we came forward, you know, two years ago, three years ago, yes, it was sounding, interest rates are going up. When we came back in December, there was signals from the feds, interest rates were going to tick down. We were getting excited. We, I know, I know...
From you, huh?
I know your comments about the feds, but, so it is year by year. Unfortunately, everything isn't financed all at once. We wish we could have the low interest rates we had in the first building or even the second, but it's just not the climate we're in today.
I guess another question that I have, and this actually might be for Mr. Gostad. So the TIF, the TIF to build the town square is based on the two buildings that are currently there, correct?
What's being proposed is to use just the value of the two buildings to pay or reimburse for the public plaza. It had originally been anticipated that we'd be using three buildings for the...
The original was the three?
Correct, yep. And under the current amended agreement, it was still anticipated there'd be three buildings built, and all the TIF revenue from all three buildings would then be servicing the bonds, and the bond funds would then have reimbursed the public plaza.
So I guess the question, another question I have is, if we don't approve this today, where does that leave you and us as a city?
Quite frankly, it'll leave us in a mess. I mean, we've got buildings that are built and designed to be around a public plaza, and we won't have a funding mechanism for that plaza. Probably be planted grass, and not a good day for us.
I guess, I don't think we should approve this. I think it sets a bad precedence to other developers in our community that we're just going to cave. I mean, like I said, not only is this, I mean, this isn't the first time you showed up, this is a second. What's to say that you're not going to come back again? I guess since I've been on the council, I really haven't had other developers come in and ask for these types of things, and I just have a really hard time continuously to bend over backwards for you. I think it sets a bad precedence for us as a city and a city council, and I feel that then people are going to think that this is what we do, and I disagree with it.
I would just comment that, you know, I think there is an example to be made of us, but I think it could be a good one. I think it could be one that we're partners in this, it's a public-private partnership. We've invested $30 million into the city of Grand Forks. in the downtown, because we believe in it. We want to build all three buildings. We want the best plaza.
But it shouldn't be our job to bail you out. I mean, that's the part that I don't really hit. And I mean, like, we're talking about even the beautification funds. Not only do you want it right now, but you want the whole lump sum. That was supposed to be in two separate payments. And so like, I feel like there are a lot of things. I appreciate what you did about the chiller, because I don't think that what you guys failed to put in should just be dumped on our taxpayers. But, I mean, you still don't even know when you can build this. I mean, there's just, I feel like there are just so many uncertainties that what happens if we agree to this? And then, I mean, I don't know what interest rates are going to do in six months. Hopefully, you guys can do a little bit better, you know, job predicting that than you did last time, but I just don't like it at all.
I would like to make the comment that in one of my discussions with the councilperson, I stated, you know, the way we put this budget together, kind of, not landlocked, but there's $4.8 million of value in the two buildings there. Our budget's 4.8. We're ready to start construction. A change, I don't see a change in our future to ask for, nor would we want to.
Right, you also said when we sat down and talked that you're having issues even selling some of those townhomes or condos, whatever you want to call them. I mean, and now all of a sudden, it's our fault. Or I feel like then it becomes a burden on us as a city, you know, because maybe if you guys had those rented, you would have some revenue where you guys could continue on with the project at hand.
But with all due respect, no matter what's going on in the buildings, as long as we're paying our property tax, that tool is being used to finance this plaza.
Okay.
It's not, unfortunately for us, we could have an empty building, but as long as we keep paying our property tax, the mechanism would be in place to pay for these bonds.
So if you guys are still paying your property tax, then why aren't we getting what we agreed to?
Because there's only two buildings.
I don't like any of it.
I, thank you. I will probably open up to other council members as well to speak, but I guess I would just say a few things. I tend to be a little more positive and optimistic than Ms. Osowski. You know, you got your whole team here. First thing I would say is thank you for being willing to invest in the city of Grand Forks., to spend tens of millions of dollars here. We talk so often that we want to have different developers here and more developers here. We want to build great things for our community. And someone takes a chance and does it in the middle of a pandemic, and it's not perfect, but I thank you for being willing to take a chance on a community like ours. That was a big bite of the apple. So first of all, I appreciate that, and I agree, we can set a great example in partnership. We got a chance to scare away any developer from ever wanting to touch Grand Forks. We can find a way to have a great feature for our community, do it the right way, and if that third building gets built, quite frankly, we can take that money, pay off the bonds sooner, and the taxing entities get the dollars quicker. So we've got a more tight and compact square, you can do it in a hurry. I don't like the negativity. We seem to be a community that loves to thrive off that. I just don't get it. You want to have a growing community, you're going to beat everybody up for everything that possibly happens. We do need to have oversight, need to do things the right way. We need to have developers that are willing to come here and take the risk. So I'll leave that for my comments, but I'm going to just say thank you for being willing to do that. Thank you for taking a chance on Grand Forks. We need more people like you, not less. Any other? Ms. Lunskey, please.
I just need to ask to be recused from voting. This project was very exciting for me and my husband, and we decided to invest in it before I was on council.
All right.
All right, looks like we do have a motion to recuse Ms. Lunskey, and we have a second. So in this particular motion, you're going to want to vote in favor to recuse her, as the way it's been spoken, so. So if you vote yes, she'd be recused. So seeing no further comment. All those in favor in recusing Ms. Lunskey signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same side?
Aye.
All right. Is that a?
That was opposition.
Opposition. Ms. Lunskey, you are recused. That motion passes with Weber dissenting. All right, further questions for, Mr. Veen?
One quick question. If this motion isn't approved, and this request isn't, what happens next? What's the impacts of not approving the motion? Because you've laid out, you know, what we'll get, what we won't get with approval of this thing here. But what actually happens if we don't?
As I stated a short while ago, it would be a mess for us. It would be, we'd have to take it back and try to do the best we can to figure it out, what we would do with that space, and how we would handle the expense of the property.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Weber. I'm going to go, Mr. Weber, then Ms. Lunskey.
There's been a lot of talk about a partnership. And then there's a suggestion that if one partner doesn't do exactly what they said they were going to do, then the partnership's over. For me, that's a transaction where if you're not going to give me what I paid for, then the deal's off. A partnership is where we come together with a common goal, and we stick together to try to see it through to the end. And we continue to do what we had agreed to do, which was the $1.1 million to support an event center in this development. And that's what a partnership is. That's what the job of the city is in a public-private partnership, is to see projects through. We often act as though we are a business in this. And certainly, we want to act in a responsible fashion for the taxpayers. But we are not trying to make a profit here. We are working to make a better community here, to create an environment where developers come in, feel welcome to this community, feel there is a value in taking a risk in our community. And that's what a partnership is. So I hope that we'll see our way through on this partnership and not just be transactional about it. Thanks.
Ms. Lunskey?
I'm also afraid that we're sending out a message to never be creative. They came to town. They didn't ask us for a tax break. They asked us to...
Sorry, you're recused. Tell us that you're speaking on this.
She can speak. I just can't vote on it.
I just can't vote.
That's not how this works.
No, I don't think you should be speaking on the matter.
No.
All right, you're done speaking. Clear that up. Mr. Veen?
One more question. I think the thing that broke the deal basically was interest rates, if I'm saying right. When the interest rates rose, that it became less feasible. Is that right?
That's correct. And actually, Craig came up here, and he also looked at the project totally separate. And do you want to speak to that, maybe Craig?
Yeah, I would, yeah. Mayor and council, Craig Tweetin'. I'm the general contractor on the project. I'm also a small investor on the project, also. Overall, they told us we couldn't build the third building, and we're really not the developer, we're the builder. And so I went ahead as our team. We repriced the building out as originally had planned on the drawings, the third one. And we actually value-priced it down to even $2 million less money we did for the same project exactly that we want there. I put it out to bids for all the banks in the area. And originally, their loan is approximately 3.5%, I believe it is. And so I put it out for loans for the banks, and the lowest I could get was about 7.1%. And that was about 3 or 4. And so that difference equates to about 3.5%, 3.6% interest. And on approximately a $15 million loan, that's close to $500,000 a year additional interest. And typical on this project, they would probably have returned a probably 7% to the investors. And there's probably about $3 million of investment in this project. I think of actually investors in the area, you know? So you're probably talking maybe the most, maybe $250,000 of return. They'll give it back to the return to the investors during the year. But actually, with an additional $500,000 in interest, it turns it upside down. So even with our package being $2.4 million less, and with interest rates at 7.1%, it came out to about a negative $70,000 return for us. And that's putting in $3.5 million. So I couldn't make it work. I tried to make it work. And the interest rates made this difference. So I drew everything I could to make it work. So, but overall, I'm just, I think you're seeing it wrong. Some of you are. And it's only my opinion. I'm just telling you. But I think you're seeing it wrong is, we're not changing. They're not changing what they're asking for in funds. They're asking for the same amount, but they're only asking for a portion right now because the only two buildings are built. So they're taking enough funds, asking enough for that TIF, for the two buildings, to take care of that. So they're not asking for anything else. They're just asking to take a little bit less right away. That's all it is. And so I don't see this being really something negative for the city or anyone else, or given into them. It's just that interest rates changed it for them. And I think this is just better for the city, for everybody, to have a really nice project. And overall, they invested approximately close to $50 million, this whole project. And for an investor to come in here, or a developer to put this into our community is a huge item. So I really don't see that the city is bending over at all. I think that they've been really good. The team has been good. They work together. The drawings are brought to the city. They've worked with the city on all departments and what they're going to be doing. I know we just received drawings from them. This week we did. And I know they went up to the city right away with the drawings. And of course, they go up for the permits and other departments. They do what they're going to be doing. And so I feel this is really, they've done everything correctly, except they got beat up on interest rates. And yeah, they didn't realize it. You're absolutely right. I'm sorry, they did find, did hit them hard. But they still had committed a lot to our community. And we have a beautiful community here, and I really appreciate it. And I don't know, any questions for me?
Questions for Mr. Tweetin'?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Weigle.
I'll be brief. I took the week to think about it, and something kind of stuck in my head is don't let perfect get in the way of good. And as I thought about that, I looked back at what was there prior. And then I thought, okay, if it had came to us and said, hey, we wanted to go with just two buildings, and this was our original plan, I think we'd all been in favor of it at that point. And so while I was critical of Lance and the crew a little bit last week, I appreciated him reaching out and to all the council members and being willing to talk about anything we asked. And I enjoyed our conversation today. And while it's not perfect, I still think it's really, really good. And I'm hoping that in the future, that third building comes forward, and we can continue to add from there.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle. Further questions or comments? Otherwise. President Sadie, please.
Mayor, thank you. These are the conversations why I'm developing a bald spot. So I know we generally discuss the do-nothing scenario as doomsday for Epic because it's going to be very hard for them to lease the property, sell the units. I think all of us are probably a little bit disappointed and frustrated that we're in this position probably as much or more than the developers are. But certainly, I'll echo the mayor's statement. A company comes to town, you know, you're not typically developing properties in Grand Forks, and you need to put in this kind of an investment is very significant for us, for all of us. And it shows that Grand Forks is doing well, and we're thriving, and that people want to be part of the process. I had some technical questions that I wanted to ask. I also, at some point, want to, I'd love it if the DDA would come and weigh in on this, but maybe that tonight isn't the right time for that. Bank Forward indicated that they did the risk analysis on the interest rates. The interesting part about this for me is I could frankly care less about the public plaza. For me, this was never about getting a public plaza built, putting in a hockey rink, putting in a stage. This was never about any of that. To me, this was about building three buildings downtown. Because we were, for me, long-term, having the three buildings built downtown is much, much better for our community, for the park district, for the school district. The county certainly needs the money. And these buildings will live well beyond the 25-year TIF. So my goal right now is to figure out how we can get the three buildings built. And if we can figure out the public plaza at the same time, that would be great. But none of my motivation in this is about the public plaza. It's the long-term health of those three buildings. So Lance, if Bank Forward, and to what the mayor was talking about, and what Brett was talking about, about how this is a partnership, and it should be a partnership, how can Epic share in part of the, the future of what we're trying to do? I mean, I want, what would be great is if you go back to Bank Forward and get another $2 million and build the entire plaza today. And you carry the interest on the $2 million bucks. And then we get the plaza done. We don't have to reduce what we're going to get. And as soon as the, as soon as the third building is built, then you're off the hook. You're not paying the interest anymore on the $2 million. I would think that that would be a reasonable, and that's a compromise. I don't know if you're capable of carrying an extra $10 grand a month in interest on... I think you're at 6.1% or something like that. So it's probably around $10 grand a month is what it would cost. I don't know if you're in a position where you can do that. But again, the bank did the due diligence on the interest rate risk, and they gave you, they gave you 4.68 million. Maybe they give you 6.68 million.
Just to clarify, I believe the analysis that they did, that they spoke about, and that our attorney who's here today responded to, was the risk analysis they did for building number two when they financed that. I don't believe they've done a risk. I can't speak to what they've done for the plaza. I believe the plaza is a little bit different because they do have the tax revenue and would have a TIF agreement, putting those dollars towards that bond payment that would pay it off in September.
Sure. Is Epic willing to absorb the interest cost on $2 million loan in order to get the entire plaza done?
I don't believe so. I believe we're putting $600,000 towards this plaza at this time, in carrying that.
Okay, all right.
Oh, sorry. Excuse me.
I'm going to help Lance out. Hi, my name is Tamara. I'm the VP of Finance. So your question, I mean, something we have considered. We've tried to consider every option. How can we get this plaza done? Which is basically how we ended up here today and what we are proposing. But if we could, we would go forward with another $2 million loan and finish off the plaza. What would that mean? First of all, the bank would be having to be willing to do that. We don't have any other collateral or anything they could use to finance that additional $2 million. What they're providing us with right now is the monetary, the monetized value of that TIF. So that works out for the bank. The other thing that we considered, if we were going to take out another $2 million and finish this off, and even if Epic was the one that was going to try to absorb that over the next two to three years, when we're waiting for the third building to be finalized, we know that in the end, that that interest would have to be paid back by the city. We don't think that that's a smart financial decision for the city. So it is something that we just decided...
I was suggesting that Epic cover that cost.
So that...
The interest on, between now and when it gets done. I figure it's about $10 grand a month. That's, Lance said you weren't in position to do that.
I guess there is, there is an option where Epic, who is, you know, a private firm, would cover interest on a $2 million loan for the city of Grand Forks. But we did, we did try to look at all scenarios. And ultimately, in that scenario, the city would be, in the end, liable to cover that debt. And we didn't want to put that on the city.
Under our current agreement, yes. I'm suggesting a different agreement because you're suggesting a different agreement.
Again, we understand your frustration.
No, I'm not frustrated, actually. I'm feeling pretty good right now. I have an avenue of clarity that I haven't had in a long time. I think, as Mr. Weber knows, he's not going to be here in two or three years. And if I'm lucky, I won't be here either. And so it is possible that if we don't build the entire plaza today, if we don't figure it out today, it is more than plausible. It might be even likely that it'll never get done. Because when the third building's built, the people sitting up here might say, I don't want to go back and put in extra electronic equipment so you can turn the lights on with a computer. They might say, there's plenty of tables out there. We don't need to buy more tables. And then they'll pay off the bonds early, and then we'll have a three-quarter plaza, and people are supposed to feel good about that. So again, I'd love to figure out how we can get it done today, which led me to perhaps Epic would take a loan from the bank and cover the interest. And we'll cover the principal when the third building's built with the new... We'll sell another bond and cover the principal. But if Epic isn't in a position to do that, that's fine. I figured I'd ask.
And the bank wouldn't provide us with the more funds.
I believe we, I believe we're comfortable, and I think we've proved that we're investing in this community.
Is there a question?
Yeah, so what is it going to take to get a guarantee that the third building's going to get built? So again, I'll go back to ultimately, this for me, this is about getting three buildings. What kind of a guarantee can we get that the building's going to get built? You're saying two or three years. We have no idea when interest rates are going to go down.
Can I ask one question for you? I think it's right along that vein. Is there a better chance of the third building getting built if that public plaza is built in the condition that we're talking about today? Or is it a better chance of getting built if it's a mud, dirt field with grass planted, and hopefully it takes?
Much better position if it's...
It does become a self-fulfilling prophecy.
Does the commercial do better? Does the price of the property raise when the commercial's completed and fully rented out, increasing our ability to pay off the bond quicker?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So can we get a guarantee you're going to build the third building?
It's in our best interest to build the third building. It's expensive land that we are currently paying interest every month on. As soon as we can build it, and it makes sense, we will.
I'd like to put that as part of an amendment to our current development agreement. I'd like it in writing that the third building will get built. You pick how many years you need, and we'll put it in the agreement. You don't need to pick right now. You can have the discussion with the city attorney at some point in the future. But I'd like a guarantee, I want it in writing, that the third building will get built. And if you're willing to, I will support you tonight.
It will get built.
Okay. I want it, I want it in the agreement.
I don't know if there is an official motion, maybe.
I'll move approval.
Got a motion approved from Vice President Weber. Do we have a second?
What are we approving now?
They're approving the request with the city attorney working with Epic to finalize the contract to include a date in which the third billing would be completed.
Will we get to review? This is just for it to go back to Gostad then, right? I mean, we're not, then he will bring back the final agreement, and then will we vote on that again?
Right now, we'd be giving him the authority to be able to set the date along with Epic. That's the reason why it's best interest of the city.
So we will get to see?
Of course we'll get to see it, but we'd be approving it tonight with the date finalized to be set with the advice of the city attorney.
I can weigh in, Mayor. The way I'm understanding it is you're giving me a direction. The modifications really are to extend the date as to when... The modifications really are to extend the date as to when the plaza would be completed because it's right now July. I think they're looking for September. July is what's in the agreement today.
Well, I think they're talking about the third building, not the plaza.
I'll get to the third building. The, the current ask from the developer is to extend the date when the plaza would be done from July to September. To reduce the, that one condition for the 1.1, to go from a 2 to 2.3 to 2.5 million dollar deposit down to a $600,000 deposit. That the plaza would be completed. We would then use those, those two buildings to, to fund the plaza. And now, a guarantee date for the third building to be completed would, would, would be the direction and that I'd bring back an agreement that would have those primary.
Can I add one thing? Instead of September 1st, can you do October 1st, just so Ms. Osowski doesn't have to see Lance up here again?
I wouldn't be happy.
Can we do October 1st, so it gives another month just to ensure the concrete pouring? Okay.
And then, so.
I'm happy to modify my, my motion that way.
All right. Is that what you understand, Mr. Veen? Okay.
But when we're talking about completion of the plaza, we're talking about full completion with our video screens and things like that, correct? Or is this stuff being completely xed out now?
Well, we would have the option in the future whether we want to add that or we want to use that revenue to pay off the bond sooner. So.
So that'll come back and then we'll have a decision to make.
That's my understanding. Would that be correct, Mr. Gaustad?
I don't know about the video board. All I know is from a legal standpoint, the way I'm developing, the direction I'm getting tonight is plaza done by October 1, a $600,000 deposit by the developer. Two buildings that are up would be the source of the TIF revenues to fund the bond that would be issued. And a guaranteed date of completion of building number three.
Okay. So that would be determined later then. I guess you'd still have the other items, but I'm assuming that there would be an increment beyond that. What's your estimate on the completion cost of the plaza? So as of today, we have it and we have a few features that we would be adding. What would you estimate that cost at for the?
The cost will be about $6.5 million as of October 1.
Right. And then, in the future, as the third building, you're going to make those additions.
The third building, it'll depend on somewhat of the time left in the TIF agreement.
I'm just, yeah, just asking for the, the things that were taken out that are going to get put back in. What would the cost of that be? I'm assuming the third building is going to more than cover that.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, definitely. Right now, the third building could have a capacity of up to $2.3 million. Might range depending on the exact date when it's completed.
And we won't expect those items to reach 2.3 or higher. So there would, regardless, there'd be an ability to pay off the tip, the bond, this original bond likely quicker.
Me and Ruyschensky, I think of that 2.3 million of that, almost a million of that was the, the chiller itself. And so if we can find an alternative method for that, we're a large way home to completing the project under phase one.
And paying off our bonds sooner. That's important to me. All right, is that understood in your motion, Mr. Weber and Mr. Veen?
Yes.
Any further comments?
No.
Mr. Cavami?
Just a question, I think, from Mr. Gaustad. So if we're putting a requirement in there, what's the repercussions? So we're saying you have to build, or what?
I'd have to think about what the remedy clause would, would read.
So fundamentally, I support the development of this, but I just feel like we need another shake at this. I feel like we're trying to figure this out and we're, I don't think we want to say no. I think we want to say not this, but can we?
Would that trigger the lot, the, the interest or the, the security over that, that third lot, Mr. Gaustad, if this doesn't, say they don't get it built in the five-year period?
Mayor and Councilman Cavami, I do have some thoughts as to what could be embedded within the agreement to, to quote, "secure" the, the, the date for the third build-out. I want to think it through. I'd rather not, you know. And, and that'll be part of what we can bring back and we'd have discussions with the developer too as to those type of security measures.
I would like to say that we do have $600,000 that we're putting towards this. And the only way we're going to see those dollars back is if we build a building three. So I think that is a remedy in itself. If we don't build it within this capacity for this 25 years, we won't get paid back.
Anything further?
I believe we're, we're already in first position on the third lot based on, so I don't know that that does anything different to be in that place.
All right, any further comments?
We are going to see this. I'm still not exactly clear if we're going to see this or if we're not going to see it if, if the attorney or city attorney and the mayor are just going to execute it or what's, what's the plan, please?
What's, what was the intention of your motion in the second, I guess, at this point?
That, that was my intention, that we were, we were moving forward and President Sandy had indicated that he wanted Mr. Gaustad to negotiate a guarantee on, on the deal that we were, on the motion.
Okay. So right now, do you want to come back for final approval or you want it to be approved tonight?
I was intending to approve it tonight.
Okay. Is that your understanding, Mr. Veen? Ms. Osowski, hold on a second. It's not your motion. Mr. Veen?
Yeah, that was my understanding when I seconded. I know we brought up some additional, but that was when I seconded.
Okay.
I personally would like to see it come back to council for final. I'd love to do this again.
Okay, you can certainly make, try to make a motion to amend that or we can vote on it as is.
Would you consider a friendly motion? Mr. Weber? No. Okay, thank you. Would you consider a not friendly?
President Sandy, I, I thought that I had incorporated your idea when I made the motion and that the idea has since morphed, but I'm, I'm sticking with my motion.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, yeah. It's not for me. Mayor?
Mr. Weigl, please.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Weber, would you consider an amendment to the motion that would put President Sandy at the table with mayor and, and city attorney to help them work through the process in order to get the approval done tonight?
The mayor and Mr. Gaustad have never done anything mean to me, but. I, I don't know. Is that, is, is that a necessary part of this? Is that, would that be consistent with your request for a friendly amendment, President Sandy?
I, I think that other members on the council want to, want to see the agreement before its final approval. So, I appreciate you wanting to sic me on them, but I, I'd rather see it come back to city council for final approval.
So, my concern about delaying this is that we have a short construction season and we want this done ideally in, in September. And so, how, how long would it take to, is, is it possible? When is our next council meeting? Two weeks? So it would be two more weeks before we could move forward with this? Mr. Treen, hello.
Just information, there were some parts on there. There were some drains that were going to take eight weeks to get. And so we delayed this thing two to four weeks. It's really going to jeopardize our completion date. So, I'd prefer that you approve it tonight, but maybe under conditions that Dana Sandy would be okay with or something else. But I really prefer you approve it tonight for this project.
We've, we've had a very warm winter, but I believe El Nino's coming. And it's going to be a cold, wet winter next year and a shorter construction season. So, what about Mr. Weigl's proposal that President Sandy, you're at the table? Does that help us get it approved tonight and, and still accomplish what you were hoping for?
Mr. Machinsky?
Yes, Mr. Weigl.
The reason I say that is not so much, in Dana's words, sic him on, on the mayor, Todd or Dan or anybody else. But I say that as, as the leader of our council, one that, that we elected to, to that position. I, I've got a lot of respect for Mr. Sandy and I have, I have the complete faith in him that he'll be able to work with those folks to, to get something done that I, as a council member, would agree with.
Well, how can I say no to that?
So I'm, I'm, I'm understanding that we move forward with the motion as is.
And we'll make sure that President Sandy is also included in the review along with Mr. Gaustad. Hopefully, he's got the, the hours in his life to, to add to that, so much appreciated.
If, if we pick up construction materials in cleanup week, I would have lots more time.
That's horse crazy, holding the level here. All right, we've got the motion and the second. Any further comments? Seeing none, Ms. Dorsted, why don't you take a roll call vote? Why don't you just go in order today? Keep it simple.
Sure, we can do that. Weigl?
Yes.
Osowski?
No.
Weber?
Yes.
Cavami? He's recused, yep.
No.
Sandy?
Yes.
Veen?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Four to two.
Four to two with Cavami and Osowski dissenting and Ms. Lunskey recused. Thank you for your time this evening. We got item 5.10.
5.10 Franklin on Fourth, Public Health and Fire Marshal's Relocation, Public Safety, Facility Space and Needs Assessment, RFQ update.
All right, Mr. Phelan, give us just, can you give us just a second? Just give us 10 seconds and you can start that one. Thanks. There's some shuffling, people leaving. And I want Brett to take a deep breath, and Dana. There, that's better. Please, take it away, Mr. Phelan.
Okay, thanks. We're not going to ask, we're not asking for a recommendation, given any update this evening on, on this particular project and getting some feedback as we move forward in the process. I think, Tom, County Administrator Tom Ford was back there. But these are some of the, the notes that he provided to me regarding where the county commission is regarding the Franklin on Fourth and also, you know, the sheriff's office move and, and those sorts of things. So, just highlighting, you know, we went, going back to 2018, 19, we let the county know that in our planning horizon of being five years that we were intending to look to move our police department into the second floor along with some PSAP operations as the most economical way that we could move forward with future renovations and expansions. And so, that's been the time horizon in, in Grand Forks County. Have really, as of late, really taken a lot of action on, on trying to earnestly work towards a solution in partnership with the city of Grand Forks. So they are conducting currently a space utilization study. They intend to have the results presented to the county commission on May 21. And that will deal with all the various space concerns that they have at the, at the Grand Forks County, primarily the sheriff's office and state's attorney's office. So those are the two primary among other, among other issues. The county commission on April 16th removed the option of placing the sheriff's office into the county office building. And there were some allusions to the state officials and concerns about locating a law enforcement agency like the sheriff's office in a building where social services are, are provided for, for, in a sense of people that would be more reluctant to go into the building due to having law enforcement, due to their experiences, experiences, warrants, what have you. So that's, that's kind of where we are today. They also, the county commission has agreed that they, they are not going to prefer a referendum at this time for the new sheriff's office. And so they're looking at alternative strategies as opposed to a mill levy increase or a sales tax increase. They have agreed with an agreement that they would not charge rent to the public health department if they stayed in the county office building. And, and in other words, they'd really like to have the public health department stay in the county office building.
I just want to add quickly, I think we should, we did have a meeting with Jeff McKinnon from Northeast Human Services. He reached out to Mr. Phelan and wanted to discuss, I think, some of the comments that were made. And he, he did not, I guess he was pitched that it was going to be on the fifth floor next to his, right, in, in, intermingled with Northeast Human Services. He wasn't aware it was on a separate floor. So he, later upon finding that, did believe that it was, was not, the reason not to have them in that building. So, also did follow up, I know the governor's office had also reached out, they were trying to understand why they were being, also being brought into this from their stance. And they also said they did not have any issues with that arrangement. So I think at least we've understanding that that is not a roadblock whether the county, you know, certainly will make that decision, but at least the state level, apparently that was not a conflict that it had been raised to be. And Mr. Phelan also said, maybe he had more words on that, but is that your understanding as well on that?
My understanding, yep. And I, I just, for the record, the public health department's on the third floor of the county office building. And I think Northeast Human Services is on the fifth and the fourth floor. And so, as long as, I think this conversation was, as long as there's some sort of separation in the building regarding the various departments, because obviously there's sensitive cases with people going to various human service, services, so.
Right. And they may have reasons for doing that, but the state was, was clearly not the, the issue actually stopping that. That would have been an internal decision that the commission was making, not something the state had handcuffed with them.
Based on that description, they thought that was workable. And so that's kind of how we left the conversation. The other conversation I've had with Mr. Ford on behalf of the county commission is, you know, we've talked about the, the costs, the cost to fit up the public health and our fire marshal office in, in the Franklin on Fourth. And so that's the $1.2 million. And you can see where the city cost is for both public health and, and the fire department. And then the rent is at $20 a square foot. And you can see how we've separated that between public health and the fire department. And because it's a joint department between the city and the county, the 367,307 would be the county share and 62,000 a year would be the county's rental share. So what I've gotten feedback is that because the county commission believes that the public health department should be in the county office building, they provided a, a no rent policy, is I think the message I've gotten is part of a negotiation that these numbers shouldn't be a given that they would agree to as part of amending the joint powers agreement. But certainly would review the costs, additional costs. They'd review the agreement and they'd consider it as part of their 2025. But they wanted to let you know as a city council that it's, it's not a given, that they would agree. The other thing that the mayor asked Maureen Dorsted, our finance director.
Sorry, Todd, what does that mean? That they're thinking about maybe? Is that what that means?
I think what their concern is, they don't know if they want to participate in these additional costs.
Okay.
That's what I'm getting at.
They haven't said no.
Yeah, just because we show them, just because we show them here doesn't mean they're going to agree to.
Okay, thanks.
Integrate that into their joint powers and, and agree to pay for those additional costs. And then Mayor Machinsky asked if we could compare two options. And so Maureen, there's a long spreadsheet in there. She, she took a look at what it would cost. And again, I know the county commission, they are not recommending the sheriff's office go into the, into the county office building. But the reason why we looked at moving out public health, other than the fact that, you know, try to locate them near where city facilities are in a new space that we could share, be more integrated, that was the number one reason. The second reason, we knew there was a space issue. And we knew with, with the taxpayers, whether they're city, county, or school taxpayers, we know that most, vast majority of the taxpayers are in, in, in the city of Grand Forks. So whoever raises taxes, whether it's the city, the county, we're going to feel the most to that. So we tried to come up with an option, a secondary option that would be a win-win is this was the additional cost to, to move both public health over to Franklin on Fourth. And then if you theoretically would move the sheriff's office into the county office building and, and I think it was reported about $3 million in upfront costs to do some retrofits in the county office building. And then we had Maureen take a look at what the bonding cost would be. And, and we went with a $13.5 million bond for the construction of a sheriff's only. And so we did a, Maureen did a, she can speak to you more in detail if you'd like, but an interest only for 13 years. And I think that's when some of the debt would sunset for the county and then they would do that, or just a standard. And so, the point is, you know, between 12.7 and 31 to 35, it was the lowest cost option. But there's obviously some qualitative reasons why that is not being considered. What I'm asking for tonight is that the county is going to do, move forward and have that space utilization study presented at their May 21st. And they're also doing a couple other options because the county knows that, you know, this amount, whether it's 31 or 35 or something plus or minus, it's, it's a lot of funding. And with not moving forward with a referendum, it's going to be awfully challenging to move forward with that project. So what they've done is also, is they've, they've have advertised right now a request for qualifications to hire a representation, a realtor, to look at commercial space for the sheriff's office in, around, around the community. And then also they're doing a request for information for developers to bring back ideas on how, other options, whether it's a public-private partnership or what else. That would be something that would be with their ability to be able to fund without additional revenue streams. And that certainly would be closer in line with this, a lower cost option. So that's what they're doing right now. doing right now. So our recommendation on behalf of the administration is to, to continue to pause, to come back to you in June, when the county commission has deliberated further with more information, come back with an answer, and then we would come back likely sometime in the latter half of June, just to say some outcomes from the county and what they've approved. And I have discussed this with Northridge, who's the developer of Franklin on Fourth, to say that we do need to make a decision on whether we're going to move forward by June, because I know they're, they're holding out for that relocation. And I think they've been gracious on saying that they could wait till, till June until some of the dust is settled on this. With that, Mayor, that's, that's our update at this point in time.
Thank you. I think it was just important to point out, I mean, the reason we proposed options for the city was an attempt to give an option to possibly save the community $22 million. I do think the sheriff's office needs a new, needs a new sheriff's office at some point in the future. This was a way to stopgap that so that the county could save some money. When they chose not to put the sheriff's office in the county jail expansion, I personally believe that was a huge mistake, and there's been commissioners that have tried to, to add that to the project, but with, to no avail on the commission. So I think they really handcuffed themselves when they decided to do that and not include the sheriffs, despite that being a priority that they knew about back in 2018 and 2019. So that was the city's attempt. Certainly, we've got an option that's less expensive for the city. It's not going to be less expensive probably for the city taxpayers, as they're going to make up that difference by paying quite a bit more to their county taxes. But again, we want them to have the freedom to make that decision, so we'll definitely sit back. I think it's important to kick it back to them to further ponder and see what those RFIs come up with. We continue to have a strong relationship, but we don't always agree, kind of like if anyone's got a brother or sister that's got the same arrangement. I know I got six of them, so. That's where we're at, so I think it was important to put those numbers. If you look at it just, you know, simply and say, you know, you have a cost to renovate a couple spaces, I think as you look at the 30-year, there certainly is savings there, eight figures, which is substantial, and it was important to present that option. So we'll see how it plays out. I think we're all looking forward to hear the space utilization study and the results of that, and probably the best time to make decisions for both entities would be after that comes back.
I move approval that we pause.
We've got a motion to pause, to approve, to probably, do we need a motion? Okay. Are you okay with that?
It's not under informational items.
But you're okay. I mean, if we get consensus, that's probably fine, since you're good, are you good with that?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Anybody else that disagrees, I guess certainly can, can motion something as well.
Mayor Bocinski, we would plan, similar to what we did tonight, when we have more information, we would bring it back to a near-term city council meeting for further discussion and deliberation.
Anything further? President Sandy, please.
The citizens of Grand Forks make up almost 90% of Grand Forks County, and our county is actively talking about ladling an additional $22 to $25 million of taxes on the citizens of Grand Forks, because they don't want to move the sheriff's office into the third floor of their own building. And they voted and took it off the table without even having all of the information. I have no idea what the county commissioners are thinking about right now, but certainly, I'm going to be very vocal if they don't adjust their opinion and start taking the citizens of Grand Forks, the taxpayers of Grand Forks' interest in mind. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy.
And probably to add to that, there's nobody here from the county here presenting and asking us to help them. I mean, in somewhat, in some ways, it's the opposite. They've said they've got this covered. This wasn't an action item today, but it would come back as an informational item, is what we're saying right now, because it did come to an earlier meeting, and then nothing really happened until you brought it now, and it'll come back, what I'm hearing now, as an informational item in June sometime, right?
Yeah, more than likely. I know Mr. Ford was here, but he left, so I, we don't have a comment from the county at the moment, but yeah, I think we would wait, obviously, give, you know, keep that option available, and then obviously, they're going to make their decision, and then the city will, you know, follow, so.
Mayor, I think for clarification, too, in the email Mr. Ford said, sent to Mr. Fieland, it appeared that he implied that the county wasn't, was unwilling to pay the additional cost of rent moving into Franklin. Not that they would have to consider it, he implied that his recommendation would be that they wouldn't pay it. So I don't know where that would leave our relationship with the county and paying for the public health space, but I, I don't mean to be offended for Mr. Fieland, but I'm a little bit offended that the county administrator would actually even imply that they're not a partner with us, when we're the ones carrying all the, all the water here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy. Any further comments on the item? All right.
Mayor Bocinski, me, one more thing to, to Ken's, council member Veen's point, we're here just because we, the mayor and I and the administration think we should keep the relocation to public health on the table. So we just want to make sure that we're taking a pause, but that we still think it's a viable option that we want to keep alive.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fieland. That's it for action items. Move on to six information items.
6.1 Statement that Changes in Cash Balance for December, January, February, and March. Move approval.
Thank you. This one is just an information item, so we don't need approval on this one, but we will have vendor list and engineer's estimate coming up next. So move on to seven, approval of minutes and bills.
All right, 7.1 is your vendor's list and engineer's estimate.
I have a question, actually, on this one, before I can approve it.
Okay, please.
Page 2 out of 11, $15,000 for basketball court sale to XL Energy. What are we doing with that?
Mayor Bocinski and council member Osowski, that's from the Alara Center. They were able to get a used basketball court from the XL Energy Center.
Oh, that's excellent, okay.
Primarily because to service two courts, right now, mainly, obviously, we want to bring more high school and those kinds of tournaments, but they use it for that youth basketball tournament that comes in.
I move approval.
Great. Got a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And the minutes from December 18.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve as is from Ms. Osowski, a second from Mr. Weber. I keep looking that way, so I'll keep taking theirs. Any further comment on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. That would be it. We'll move on to citizen comments as they relate to general nature. We have none. Move on to item 9, city administrator comments. Mr. Fieland, any comments this evening?
Just a couple. Mayor Bocinski, members of city council, we are, we are planning, from an administrative perspective, next week, Monday, to give you a Red River Valley Water Supply project update, and we're nearing the time where we have this project participation agreement, which is kind of the final general agreement. So we're going to give you an update on the project, what's in front of us regarding that agreement, and likely ask the city council to approve an engineering task order to do some analysis on the various appendices that make up that agreement. So I want to give you a heads up on that. That will probably be the major issue next week, Monday, and I just want to further fortify the mayor's thoughts on our visit to JR Simplot Company. We were well received and warmly received, and there were comments about all that is going on here in Grand Forks and the strong leadership, and it's the kind of place where they want to, they're proud to locate their facility here. So it was a really positive meeting with JR Simplot. So thank you. And thanks for council member Weber and JDA chair for attending, along with the mayor and I, and representatives of the EDC.
Thank you, Mr. Fieland. We will move on to, I don't have enough time for the minutes, item 9, mayor and city council member comments. So we'll start with Mr. Weigl, any comments this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Osowski, any comments this evening?
No, sir.
All right, let's see. Ms. Lunskey, any comments? Now you're no longer recused, now you're allowed to talk. All right. Mr. Cavami, any comments this evening?
No, thank you.
Mr. Veen, Vice President Weber.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
President Sandy?
Unfortunately for me, Mayor, in a few weeks, Mr. Weber will no longer be able to bully me into voting the way he wants me to. So I'm, I'm going to start the going-away celebration today by telling him how much I appreciated our conversation tonight. You always bring a new element that I really appreciate. I, I am still struggling to understand how that public plaza can cost $7 million, and so I want to confirm at some point that we are seeing all of the costs, all of the expenses, everything that's going into it. I, I am a little bit disappointed, because we do talk about.
Okay, maybe I do have some comments.
Your time has passed, Mr. Weber.
We talk about, we talk about being in partnerships, and it feels like it's a one-way street sometimes, but I am looking forward to getting that plaza done for, for them, because they need it to get the spots leased up, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Always a good discussion.
Thank you, President Sandy. Just a couple comments, and we'll let Ms. Osowski lead the adjournment. I would just thank the council. I mean, these, these conversations aren't easy. We've got different viewpoints. It was a very respectful conversation, very transparent. We're doing these out in the public, out in front of everything, and it's, it's not easy. It's a sausage-making, so to speak, but I think in the end, we're moving the community forward, and that's important, and I think we should all be proud. Mr. Weber, you should be proud of the work you've done over the last 12 years, but even the new commissioner, council members that have been here for two years, you should be really proud of what's happened in your city, and just wanted to take a moment to, to thank everybody. So with that, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I move adjournment.
Got a motion for Ms. Osowski, a second for Ms. Lunskey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We're adjourned.